Two items of business are almost informational things.
The first thing that I have is, I have a request for the extension of the lease agreement for the Bronson. Well, it's the United States Department of Agriculture Natural Resource Conservation Service, the NRCS office. The extension of that lease agreement to 2018. The rates stay the same for the rent that they pay us. That amount is sixteen thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents at a monthly rate of one thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty-one cents. So this just extends the lease agreement for that portion of the ag center that NRCS rents out. And maybe solar is part of that.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Reed? Anybody in the group? We have a motion by Ms. Lilly.
Say.
Saying goodbye Commissioner Rock Meeks. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second item I have is dealing with something we've been working on for two or three years here trying to upgrade some parts of the courthouse. And in this case, it is the windows, the very old, old windows in the courthouse. And we had applied for grants and we had applied for funding. It seemed that these kinds of things, as far as getting money, you know, from Tallahassee, it's a local issue that they feel like that you should, you should fund locally. I know you had talked to Senator Dean and, and others, and we've sent requests up there. Jimmy Jones done a good job of submitting items for grant funding up there. But again, it, it comes back to local issues.
They'll build a whole new courthouse in Washington County and they won't give us money for windows.
Well now, yeah, but now a chief judge or somebody can sign an order for a courthouse or something and it will happen. But in this case, where it's just maintenance and those kind of things. Well, there's a staff made up of, there's a committee made up of staff and it's called the Levy County Court Issue Committee, if you want to call it that. We meet, that's with the court administrator, Mr. Silverman. His office, that's also the sheriff, just different ones, but it's not the space committee that we know that was set by resolution. This is just totally on the local issues in the courthouse. And the last one was April the sixth, and we talked about security issues, cameras in courtrooms, panic buttons in the mediation rooms, those kind of things. But the big thing was courthouse windows, both for security, but mostly for energy. We have vines that go through some of the windows down on court side. So finally, we got the approval from court administration to replace those forty-eight windows. This is not, this is coming from the court facilities fund. So it's from court cost and other things that does that, it's not from the general fund. So that's, and that's not the grant money or the money that we got from the state before, that's still sitting there.
There's enough money in that fund to pay for that.
Yeah, Ms. Reese said everything's good there from the court facilities fund.
I see it approved.
Whoa, 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 we got two bids, guys, we got two bids.
And it's been approved by the court administrator and they're recommending to y'all for approval.
So before you have two proposals, one from Staley Construction Group, one from Nature Coast Glass LLC. Did we, I kind of wish Jimmy was here, did we actually ask anybody else or?
Yeah, Shay's Glass was the third one. They didn't respond because in this particular work, you've got to first remove the windows and then do all of that framework because of the rotting hole that we discovered even when we've done it up in Indiana Dawkins office and replaced those windows up there. So it's a two-part thing. So the total is forty-eight windows and plus the sheet rock, the paint, everything that's going to go along with that in the end. The total of the work is a hundred, one hundred and four thousand three hundred dollars, and that was Staley Construction Group.
Yes, so this email from Jimmy, it said that Shay's Glass never responded, then show up to look at the job, never responded to follow up. Yes, ma'am, this can.
Mr. Sherman, has always been as low paid as in Levy County or where are they from?
Both of them show a chief of name address.
They're blessed to know you can. Staley Construction is the one that's done most of the work. The other, about our work, there's a sub under some of the work. Most of the work Indiana Dawkins office, this office, the board office and all that's done usually by Staley Construction. So they kind of know and pitch into as well as what was involved with each old windows when they come out. The other thing, we will save what windows we feel are salvageable and sell those at auction just for the historical part of it. The sun won't be, some won't last.
Don't do a lead test. Mr. Grant.
Mr. Chairman, has anyone, this has been brought up before, has anyone considering how to alleviate the problem of those stairs going into the board office for handicap purposes?
No, sir, we have not. I don't think we have room there, Mr. Grant, for the slope that's required before you get to our door. So there is a push button, you know, around on the side, there's handicap parking in the back that.
Yeah, I realize that, I just, there's a lot of people that don't realize that though.
Right, and we understand that, but I don't think that, from what we can tell is we don't have the room there to, to do it by ADH standards for the slope without really probably tearing out a lot and moving it all up towards this way, you know, to start the slope. But those other issues that'll come up through this group, this seem to be the most pressing and the one that's been on the radar and submitted for different kinds of grants over a period of time.
Well, the reason I brought that up is that I remember it's been brought up before about those stairs.
Well, we got, we have that, we have some elevator deficiencies, but the elevator, this is court facility fund, so most of the windows is down on that side and that's one where we're able to use that funded as opposed to fixing this elevator right here, you know, out of those funds. But we're trying to find out some kind of a tie-in to it that we might be able to do that.
But as far as this elevator, I call it the Tunaville Trolley.
Yes, sir.
We have two quotes. One from Staley Construction, one from Nature Coast Glass. In your package, you see that, and I guess when you decide whether or not we're going to do inoperable windows or operable windows.
Inoperable windows.
In open? Or windows that.
Right, for security, it's inoperable and that's a decision that was made by the court side. If that's what they want.
So we either got a hundred and four thousand three hundred from Staley or a hundred and nine thousand five hundred from Nature Coast Glass.
And then a lot of this, why the rates may be a little more, some of this is going to have to be done nights and weekends when courts not in session or the courthouse is not in operation. There's just a whole bunch that goes into this.
Since I've been on this board, the cost of materials, when we first looked at this, it was seventy-five thousand.
Is this part of the project that the chief judge said that the, that they would pay for some of this or pay for all of it?
As a chief judge, that's that grant money, that's that money, about a million that's been sitting there towards a new board room and those kind of things. It's not enough to build a wing on, so it's just sitting there through an interest and hopefully we'll get some action from it sometime. But whenever we've asked for additional money to go with that, a lot of them said, you know, we want to see some brick and mortar, we don't want to see consulates and. But that's what the chief judge is involved with is that fund. And that's a mutual thing between the chief judge and the board on the use of that million, one, maybe two, whatever it is instead.
But the court facilities money is pending.
Correct, court facilities.
This ain't cost us nothing. It's coming out of court cost and other revenues with that. So let's clear to the board. We have a motion by Commissioner Stevens, a saying by Commissioner Joyner, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Now, information wise, I'd like to recommend that we hold a budget workshop after our next meeting, July fifth. In between now and July the fifth, I would ask that each of you contact me or Ms. Reese and let's do one-on-ones and go over things just like we were talking about this morning. One of the budget issues that's not funded would be the cost of the incentive that they, that they talked to you about if we can get that kind of amount. The other thing would be personnel, you know, whatever we put into the ag positions and that kind of thing. We do know that our group health insurance has got a six point one percent increase this year, which is great, a lot of people, a lot of counties are in double digits. The pool we're in is probably got twenty-seven or twenty-eight members on the group health side and we were the number seven as far as claims experienced. With that, six point one is great.
Like one is good or? One is bad.
One's bad.
Okay.
But anyhow, but at six point one percent, she has put in ten percent not knowing, so we're good there on what y'all can give me projections on that. But that's what I'd ask, so is it the claim that you guys give that y'all just schedule times to come in one-on-one and then we'll have our budget workshop. The county departments can come and present their proposals and their wish list to you. But they've already sent that in, so you'll know pretty much what they're asking for, if it's anything in addition to what they had last year.
Can we get copies of what they said?
We'll get those out to you by the way, and so you'll have those, and once you get them, then you can schedule your.
Can we get the first two?
Yes, ma'am, we'll get you the entire package because all the constitutionals has already submitted, there's two, so.
Well, I've got, that was Shiva, but I don't have, I don't, it's not one of.
Right, and she's not, she was not even complete, we met the other day and she said she still had some other figures to keep in that she did not have. Because usually a lot of times you're about a month to two months behind things coming in, you haven't even know where we're at. We'll get you a complete run past of where we're at, you'll be with today, so y'all have that and just schedule those appointments.
And bring your red pen.
But yeah, that's, that'll be that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, COVID.
Ms. Jack.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Ms. Jack.
I'm here to present the, the list of, the selection of applicant applicants for the public safety director interview. The selection that was made by staff. The top five. You have a list. Point. We have Mr. Campbell, Mr. Gold, Mr. Harold, Mr. Taylor, and Mr. Watts. Those are the top five after staff that you. I need to know how you want to proceed with the interviews, if you want to go with those five, and if so, maybe say that you can be, um, get.
I got, you know, just getting this list this morning, I got a couple of questions. One of them is, Mr. Gold, if my memory serves me correct, he's the gentleman who's running for county commissioner in Marion County. Is that a fact or is that?
I do not know.
I believe, I believe you're correct. I think that's something we might want to look into is whether or not he is even still interested in the position at this time. I see he's made the top five. I will also, and, and don't get me wrong, not being critical, we need to sign a, a committee to do this and I'm.
No, you didn't.
No, you didn't.
But not a committee, we allowed instructed staff to do this.
Right.
But I am kind of disappointed that two of the people on this list that I know were local as far as live in Levy County. I know we don't have a local preference, you know, I don't say that, but I am, I am disappointed to see that they didn't make the top five. I think, I, I believe we should, we should, should have interviewed a local, a person who resides in Levy County. Let me put it to you, let me just say it is that way, I mean, it's not very clear, but I'm trying to dance around what the attorney always yells us about. He just like to yell at me, so I'm just trying to stay out of trouble with you. So anyway, I guess what I'm, where I'm going with this is, is if we're going to do interviews, I, I see that. Lamar Stegall's name is on here and he was slated by two of the four board members. So that makes him kind of like the sixth place candidate.
Right.
That we should extend, I, I think we should extend every process to him now.
Well, let's do this, Mr. Chairman, then Mr. Gold is seeking an election in another county, then let's take that out and substitute that.
Well, I think we need to contact Mr. Gold to find out if he's interested in the job, if he's not, then we would move Mr. Stegall into the, to the stock. We'd still interview the five, but we.
If not, well, let me say, well, let me say it this way, ma'am.
I don't want to eliminate Mr. Gold because he may say, forget it, I'm going to be y'all's emergency or.
But if he is within that mile radius, him being a county commissioner in another county probably wouldn't have any, any appearance of him being employed in Levy County. But if, if he's in that radius of what, sixty miles, I don't know where he lives.
Will he have time to do both?
Well, I agree, but I mean, I'm just saying.
Mr. Sherman, does the job require residents in Levy County?
No, ma'am, no.
But we did put a requirement that you would live within a certain mileage radius or time radius.
What we put in there was the test, said that if you live within sixty miles of, if you did not live in the borders of Levy County, you do not get a take on vehicles. If you live more than sixty miles away from Levy County and you have, and Bronson and you have to move, you are required to move to Levy County. That, that's the only requirements that was there. Now, I know that there was a lot of misinterpretations of what was actually said that went out in the papers, across social medias and stuff like that. But there again, you know, that, that was what was said.
So it said, Mr., it said, Mr. Gold applicant aware of said requirement?
Yes, it was part of the job description, whatever we advertised it.
And does he fit it? Do we know?
I don't know if he fits it, but he would have to adhere to the standard that was set forward.
I understand. Saying that it was to move to Levy County.
If you live more than sixty miles away from Bronson and you were having to relocate here because you got, you're basically in the middle of the state. And if you had to move, so wanted to move, then you had to relocate to Levy County, you couldn't move out of Miami and come into.
Which is a mile across the border.
If you live within the sixty miles, you don't have.
Right. But, Mr. Chairman, I'd simply suggest this, that if Mr. Gold is seeking an election in Marion County and knowing that this advertisement went out, filled his position probably about the same time he chose to follow the papers. Now, is he wanting to serve Levy County or Marion County?
Would be added.
So with, with that being said, you know, I have no problem in saying that, you know, you can't have your pick and choose and put somebody else in that place.
All these, all these job interview related issues. There's no reason.
This is true.
That's right. She said there's no reason why we can't interview six, so.
Amen.
I would entertain the motion to add a name to this list or add a name to, out of the pool. If that's what the board sees fit, then in the, in the meantime, I do think that we, it would be prudent for us to figure out if Mr. Gold is interested in the job or not, I mean, one way or the other.
Do you need to add that to the list in form of a motion or can we just get that?
Well, I think our original motion was to narrow it down to the top five. So.
Then the motion, that was created and.
We could just add Lamar, we could just add Mr. Stegall to the five.
Make the motion, we add Mr. Stegall to the, instead of five, have it six and then bind out if Mr. Gold was still interested in the job or not.
I'll second that motion. What? Yes, did you say two Levy County residents? Well, there, there were two, but one of them didn't get any. Didn't get any selection from the four.
From the panel.
So. I mean. I, I mean, I'm just going with Mr. Commissioner. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? I hear what you're saying, but. Yes, Ms. Lilly.
Process question. If you, if you say you're now going to interview six, if Mr. Gold drops out, does that mean you then bring another one up from the pool?
That's why we're not saying we're interviewing six, we're going to add Lamar to the five.
I don't, I really don't, I don't think Mr. Gold's going to remove this name, I don't believe.
Okay. So we'll just add Lamar. Right, that's what intended your motion. We have a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed?
Kate, would you want to set a date for the interview? Or would you want to, we'll be contacting you later this week?
I would simply check and see.
For the next four meetings?
See, see when they, see when they clear.
No, I can't do it. Well, then would you like me to schedule them, Cincinnati, next week, the afternoon of the fifth? After our.
Yeah, the budget workshop, but.
We can still, we can still schedule. Shop at six if you want to, but we need to move forward with that.
Let's, let's do the budget workshop immediately following the board meeting and then we'll do the interview you say started like at two.
Two o'clock.
We also have the possibility of depositions being scheduled. And I don't know exactly what day those are coming. I've tried to work it down to schedule them for either the fifth or the nineteenth, but I don't know.
Well, you just tell them since they're not, it's far in that local.
We've got county business we have to take care of.
We're, we're already having another extension of the discovery deadline and the judge was not happy with the last one. Also, no, it's not our fault, but we've already given them the, the board's already told me after, after board meetings for work, so now we can all have to rearrange that. But there were very few dates left that were available to everyone because a lot of people involved.
We have got to get this process moving.
But I understand that, I'm just warning you that that might interfere, we may have them juggle times.
Okay, we'll pick a date outside of those dates that we're scheduled for depositions.
And, and I've only set aside the dates for board meetings.
Number twelve, that's a Tuesday.
No.
July.
I can agree on the schedule too.
So we'll do the interview, move interview to the twelve? Or move to the depositions?
If we're not moving yet, this.
We're even naming the same. So do not.
I don't think, I'll only accommodate both because I don't anticipate the depositions are going to take very long. And they may not even include all of them. We haven't said yet.
Can you clarify what the depositions are about because I'm sure there are some ears burning.
They're, they're all the need, the lawsuit for American Atheists versus Levy County.
Oh, wonderful. And commissioners are being deported?
Yes. That we know of, I haven't received the notices yet, I don't know.
They ask you, is Kevin, who's here?
The time is making, you get very long. It's very easy, the law is in charge and the landing point is shaking.
All right, so when are we going to do interviews? On the ninth?
Y'all tell me.
And then we'll just work around the depositions, try working, I mean, we got a pretty big window, nine.
On the fifth.
Yeah, fifth. I'll say the fifth. I mean, I can be mine, but I have it. I'm right here. Let's maybe have my time slot on the fifth.
Budget workshop.
Be in the following, or the county commission meeting. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Connie.
It'll be a busy Tuesday.
I like the day.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, today's a little different, July October money, today's actually kind of discussing some issue with money. What I'm coming today is to discuss and propose, um, we currently provide services on holidays, county holidays. Attached to this is, we started back in November because it's a disposable year and I, when I've done this, we, was actually just a day or two after the May thirtieth holiday, but for Memorial Day. But what I want to bring to your attention is we're actually, we're losing money providing services. We've tried on, for example, Good Friday, being it's not a, a major type holiday, we've tried going ahead and setting up trips to fill in those voids because it doesn't matter. If we only do, say, dialysis, I mean, we pick those people up at four thirty in the morning and the last person dropped off is usually after six o'clock at night. And, and we have like five or six groups of those, so several will drop off in the morning, some at ten o'clock, so there is necessary and we can't work people all day long or bring them out on a holiday and say, well, you can work three hours this morning and somebody else will work, you know, different shifts like that. Not to mention that ends up just about every employee, we work every county holiday that we have. The amounts that I'm showing back here also I'm going to bring to your attention do not include the match that the county has to make for benefits. These are simply what I've got.
Wages.
Wages and what it's costing us in fuel, which some of the fuel I know is incorrect. I think maybe some of the drivers didn't fuel their buses at the end of the day because I know that fuel should be more than what it's showing. So again, with the cuts that we've taken and that we even still look for in the future for possible cuts that are going to come down due to reduction in trips because of Medicaid, and I hate to keep bringing that up, but it's still, it's, it's still trickling down. So what happens is our trips begin to decrease, then funding is going to decrease in the transportation advantage funds. So they take a look at entire amount of trips for the entire year from all funding sources. So what I'm trying to do is again make budget cuts, with the cuts that we've had put in place to help offset some of those expenses and expenditures that we're currently paying for holiday. Not only are drivers having to come in, office staff is, because someone has to be in the office to dispatch, so again, we're doing, you know, a shift in the morning. you know, a shift in the morning, one person's coming in for five hours, or six hours, and the next one's coming in for the afternoon, five or six hours.
So you're asking that the people have to go to dialysis, that we don't schedule them to take their money for days, or that?
Those people, we've in the past had tried to cut down drivers, um, and we haven't done it in a long time, called in, they have family to get them there, um, you know, it's either enabled, but most of them have family who can take them there for that one day, that we have for those particular holidays.
So it would be creating hardship, so to speak.
That's right.
One has money.
And I knew you were the last that, Ms. Lily, and, and I understand that, um, and again, this is up to y'all. I'm saying we don't, I guess what I'm getting at as well is, is we, I know we provide a different service than other agencies in the county, but Sterling County provides services, whether it's, you know, landfill, or even the clerk's office, you know, provide services and everybody else is closed. Um, we're the only agency that's not closed. If you, you know, choose for us to continue this service, we will continue this service. I mean, you know, I'm not standing here saying I'm totally against it, but I need you to be aware that what it is costing us, and this is one way to reduce that, not to mention, because, like I said, we have so few employees, the majority of employees are literally working every holiday that rolls around. So wages are not just holiday pay, as eight hours of regular pay. Every employee that works that holiday is also getting an additional time and a half for every hour they work.
Ms. Karen.
Mr. Chairman, do those patients that require dialysis, do they get them on a daily basis?
No, ma'am, it's a three-day week.
Ms. Karen.
Uh, the patients that are on, like, transporter dialysis or Medicare, Medicaid patients.
They, no, sir, we don't need Medicaid or Medicare. These people are for transportation disadvantaged under that funding, they're low income, some of them um, don't have personal vehicles that they can drive, that's why I say every application requires an emergency contact, um, someone that they can count on to, you know, provide that transportation. Not to mention when Christmas holidays fall, for example, because those are the two holidays, Christmas Day, Thanksgiving Day, we do not provide transportation, period. Not only that, the dialysis centers themselves are closed. They reschedule, they can reschedule those few people that fall on there to a different day, and they end up actually having like two days of dialysis in a row, instead of every other day of dialysis. So we have, of course, take them, we still end up taking them those days, uh, they end up, I mean, they're not doing without dialysis three days. I wouldn't be standing here reporting to them suggesting we not provide somebody a life sustaining trip, or medical, you know, it's a life sustaining for them, um, and say, we don't want to provide transportation. That's not what I'm here presenting, what I'm asking is, we have these people can get to and from. Most of, a lot of them have vehicles to be able to go, um, family, but I just want to bring before you, we're trying to cut budgets, I'm trying to cut a budget, and this is one of the places that I feel we make.
Ms. Karen. Yes, ma'am, we sell in.
What about a person who decides they, at the last minute, they don't have a way to go, and they have to go through a dialysis? Would they be calling, um, EMS?
I'm not sure really how to answer that for her, um, the question she's asking, because I can see that happening with people that in that stadium.
I think. I think that would be a good dispatcher, and they probably say it's not a life threatening emergency.
Let me put it this way, we have people who are on dialysis, and again, these are life sustaining, um, appointments that they must keep. We have many of those who only go twice a week, at their own choice, okay, so, um, you know, again, I'm not here saying I don't want to do it, I'm here laying this out to my board in a way that I need guidance, this is a place that I could help to cut in our budget, but if, if they feel that we need to continue to do that, then I will figure out a way to continue to provide that service.
Can you get in touch with the dialysis place and give them a list of our people? And give a list of the holidays that we have, and ask them if there's a way that they can not schedule them on the holidays?
I can do that, I can probably say this, um, for Ms. Lily is it would, they would say, well, we can do it on a, let's say if a holiday fell on Monday, and we get to provide the service on this Monday, they would say, well, no, they're not open on Sunday, so that's not going to work either. I think they are in Gainesville, but I'll take Trenton, for example, they're not open on the weekend. No, they are open on Saturdays, I'm sorry, I'm very sorry, they are. Because we used to provide on Saturday, but not Sunday, they're not open on Sundays, they are open on Saturday. The facilities in Gainesville I know are open on Saturdays as well, but I'm not sure about Sundays. So they would look at a way to push it out now, so they may end up going Tuesday, Thursday, and want to go Saturday, but then there we are again, working on a day that right now, we are working it off on Saturdays.
Paying, paying up, they can run it either way. But is it less on holiday than on Saturday?
Yes, it is. It still usually ends up time and a half by the end of the week.
Right.
But it's not time and then time and a half on top, and eight hours.
Most of the dialysis centers are closed, even Gainesville on Sunday, it's either Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday.
Yeah.
Well, what we're seeing on those, the patients that are getting dialysis are covered by Medicare, or Medicaid, or a combination of both, and there's a broker that they can call for non-emergency private stretcher transport, a wheelchair transport, and we use them frequently um, in Gainesville, because they have a lot of patients that you don't run on Saturday, that come from Leaning County, Peter County, um, that end up coming up to Shams for dialysis, and they use, uh, for that day, they'll use a stretcher transport, a wheelchair transport service, supplied by the Medicare/Medicaid brokers.
Right, now, because we, and again, we have to push Medicaid aside, because we don't, we did not sign up on contract with the brokers for any Medicaid, but there are people who, most of these people that are under the transportation disadvantaged grant funding, that use us, are under Medicare. They have a crossover of Medicaid/Medicare, we don't bill Medicare, we don't, Medicare doesn't give us transportation funds, so that's why we have. Yes. I said, why, no, let me take that back. I don't know how Medicare works as far as transportation, I just know they don't give an agency transportation dollars, um, I don't know, I don't think they give, I wouldn't think they'd give the individual transportation dollars, um, because, and this is kind of hard, back when we done Medicaid, and we had people who have Medicaid/Medicare, they were considered, um, non-eligible for transportation dollars under Medicaid. So therefore, we pulled those people into our pool for trip and equipment, or the TV funding, grant funding, because they did not qualify, because they had the crossover between the two. You had to be full Medicaid to get Medicaid transportation dollars.
I appreciate what you're trying to do, but I don't want to take any action today until you can check on these other things, and see if that's something that they can work with us.
Okay.
Because I know how these people feel working with them in the past, and how anxious they get, and I don't want to put any kind of stress on people who are already under a lot of stress.
And I, I know the numbers are incomplete, you said it doesn't include the match, this includes the straight salary and the fuel, but the five examples that you had here, um, it costs us a hundred and six dollars and forty-three cent, I don't know math, Liz. Hundred and thirty-six dollars, um, second example, we actually were in the good fifty-eight dollars and four cent, and good eighty-seven dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, and then on the last example, we lost three hundred and eighty-nine.
Right.
Um, and overall, big picture of things, that's not a lot of money, again, I do understand your statement that it did not include the benefits that go with the, the hourly wages. But we are going to provide the service, and, you know, this is the only form of transportation that some folks have, so. Um, I gotta go along with Lily on that, that if you can look and see that will these people just be shut out in the cold, or will they, will the dialysis center work with us if they have an opportunity? So that we can do what we need to do to save the money, but yes, they'll provide the service for us, so. So if you can, Dan or whoever, check on that.
Yep, absolutely.
Not only that, but Ms. Connie said, it, it goes by the number of trips that DOT is looking at, this air funding, and then want to be on the positive side.
It's just, you know, and like I say, we, we love those people, I mean, my drivers love them, um, we put a lot of hard work into a lot of dedication and hard work for what they do, and I just want to make sure that everyone knows, because this is very, very important, um, Levy County Transit takes no money from the, the general fund from this board. We are solely, um, living off of grant money, and, um, any we transport two of the, the schools, the Creekside and Nature Coast, so, um, I, what I'm still trying to work towards, since we lost so much funding, is that I don't ever have to stand in front of this board and ask for funding.
Yes, ma'am.
It's, it's getting tight, and I have found some ways, you know, to cut, like, that we're still working on the, um, the software to get that taken care of, um, through the agreement and such. But I, that's, that's my main goal, is not to have to come before this board and say, you know what, you know, we need a hundred thousand dollars, or a hundred, whatever it may be, to get through the next year, so, um, I'm just looking at every avenue possible, but, um, we love our dialysis patients, and if that's what we need to do, we will absolutely, you know, that's not a problem at all for us.
I think that's a good compromise.
It's just a, a request to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And we're good for Friday still, right?
Yes, yes, we can ask both, yes.
We spoke.
We did.
You're doing a good job, you.
Thank you, Connie.
You're welcome.
You're talking fast.
We have.
Shannon.
Good morning.
They better be quick.
First one is, uh, the first item is just a motion, uh, stands, but it was a motion to adopt, um, or for the resolution of twenty sixteen dash zero three nine. Um, this is just adopting some corrections to your local housing plan, um, this came before you back in, was it April? April nineteen, right. Um, since then, or during that time, uh, the ship regarding this undergoing review from the state, and, um, there are a couple of changes that needed to be made, so we went ahead and appropriated and put it in your local housing system plans, and we just, we requested you re, not re-adopted, but adopted approved resolution twenty sixteen point three nine.
The plan would be amended.
Yes.
It's a pleasure to the board. Ms. Karen.
Mr. Chairman, what is a Florida housing, financial corporation, a state outfit, private or what?
No, public property. Thank you.
For a motion. Karen, that was the second motion, and we have a. Motion by Commissioner Stevens, a second by Commissioner Meeks, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, and your second item is just a, um, more like county, but, um, the ship program has been appropriated, just under a hundred thirty million dollars for the, for the program, and um, of which the county is eligible to present the allocation as three hundred fifty thousand for our program, and the attached form in your package is just, um, it's called certification, and staff requested that you, I guess the pro motion should be approved, and that's signature, and, um, the staff has submitted the signed, uh, attached certification form, so we can qualify for the allocation for ship program.
The motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Meeks, all favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Is there any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
How, how, uh, was it decided that Levy County gets three hundred and fifty thousand, one point three million?
Yeah, it's based on population, unfortunately, yeah.
Didn't anybody else?
We've always had about three hundred fifty thousand dollars. We've always gotten that much. Okay. Yeah.
And a hundred and thirty-five million.
Oh, a hundred and thirty-five, okay, I earned one point three, and I'm, I'm not good at math, but that didn't ring a bell.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Alright, we have a motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carries, thank you. John, go.
I got the big one.
Here we go. Close it up here.
Good afternoon. Um, first one I've got is, um, I need your recommendation on the, um, extension for the local state emergency we did for a couple of small cars. Um, which actually expires today, we ran it an extra week, so.
Yeah, motion approved a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Alright, um, the next one I got is, um, which I brought back, um, at the last meeting, I brought back at a meeting there about the, uh, crisis track, so after doing some further investigation and looking at it, and I got with the attorney, and got all the proper contract paperwork, um, and submitted to her to look at, and it's, um, nothing's really changed in it, other than I gave you more of an explanation, um, but the, uh, the pricing of it's still the same, I had to change, but both of the, when the attorney had brought forth on the exhibit eight, um, the, there were some other paperwork differences, so we got the contract, submitted it to her, looked at it, um, and that is pretty much it, so, um, I'd like to, like I said, go with that and replace that IDAM software that we got, and this one does a whole lot more, as you can see. Um, it'll track all their time management, labor, um, situational awareness, um, roads, bridges. So they can use this stuff, not only just damage assessment, also the road department can use it to track their labor and their equipment, all that stuff can go into it. Um, the biggest upfront cost, like I said, is the, was it fifty-two hundred dollars, um, that includes the training, the software, all this stuff, and everything training related to it. It's, uh, three hundred dollars extra a year than what we're paying for IDAM, but it does a whole lot more.
For a motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Meeks. All in favor, is there further discussion, excuse me, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carries. See this side, of the, of the dice, has picked up a slack. This side be making all the motions in seconds. Mike Dale.
And the last one, um, we got two over here, um, the, our typical, every year, the, man, actually the funds that run our department, um, the NPA, NPD, the NPA's estate funds, um, request approval to accept, um, that contract, and that one's, uh, four hundred five thousand eight hundred and six.
Motion to approve. With a motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Meeks, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
And the last one, um, request approval to accept the NPD, which is our emergency handover performance grant fund, which is the second half of the, the grant that run our departments.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Meeks, and a second by Commissioner Rooks, um, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed.
Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you, see, pays off the northern thirty. Fly right through. How are you doing?
Good morning.
Very good.
What was that for? What? That look. Good news, it's not on the agenda, it's just informational. Um, we.
That's right.
We received notification back from the Department of Health, the state of last matching grant, we did receive the award for.
All right, we received notification back from the Department of Health, the state of the last matching grant, we did receive the award for the vents. They only awarded us about half of what we requested, but something better than nothing, um, and the other ones were not awarded because of budget limitation from time, so. We're getting about eighteen thousand dollars for a vent that should cover almost three vents for a.
Vents being ventilated.
Yes.
On the agenda of the Department of Public Safety, requesting approval from the board to purchase six roads and six SIM cards, we program a wireless data solutions. For four thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents, this is a budgeted item, and this will allow us to complete our network for the fighter rescue stations, tie them into the headquarters, um, to provide a more secure internet access for the stations, uh, and more efficient management of all the remote sites.
It's going to save us twelve thousand dollars.
Yes, um, currently we have three different vendors for internet service at the station, and all of them except Verizon are two hundred dollars a month per station, um, reducing it to the one vendor of Verizon, will bring it, bring it down to about twelve thousand dollars a year.
Wow. Say it, say it. There's a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to call you back, we should have just like, pretty much slayed out, so, right?
Resolution twenty sixteen dash thirty-two, um, we're requesting the authorization existence of the creation of a rideaway V, um, transferring all of rideaway located in Leaning County that's generally, generally described as southeast one hundred and seventeenth place and southeast one hundred and twenty-seventh terrace to the public for the county. Um, and it's, um, was earned with the, um, by Mr. Mazzasil, and it's a sixty-foot rideaway. And it's located behind the Spiegel Chase subdivision.
It's a pleasure to do. Do I hear a second? We have a motion by Commissioner Meeks, and a second by Commissioner Rooks, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And the next item of business, IT has been tabled, uh, the request of the clerk of court, so. That brings us to public comments. Is there anyone here who likes to speak on behalf of a public comment? All right. Ms. Weiss, from Nathan?
Southly Mark Place is Saturday from nine to noon, come out by some cool stuff.
Mary Mary.
Mary Mary.
Sam Sam. Councilwoman Boiler.
Um, I have a few things, um, the Leaning County Sheriff's Office, um, took down a mess at the Bronson on Pennsylvania Avenue, and, um, which we're so very thankful to y'all for. Um, we are going to be, we sent a letter out to the property owners, and we're looking to have that property demolished or, um, repaired, so that's a good thing for our town Bronson, and our community property.
How dilapidated, how, what's the building look like? Maybe a good joint fire training exercise for county and city fire.
Well, that would be, uh, probably, that would be donating to us, but, you know, possibility, possibility. And then, uh, I want to thank Mister Dean and, um, the rest of the county officials for the help with the residents on Marshburg with the rideaway, the name of the property. And, um, I really appreciate us maintaining a good relationship, I thank y'all for all your hard work and dedication to the town Bronson, I really appreciate you. And then I want to invite everybody to our farmer's market on July second, it's from eight-thirty to noon, and then, um, the Fourth of July celebration, which will actually be held on the fourth, which is a Monday, um, we'll be having a barbecue cook-off, a breeze pole, softball games, a military salute, one-room derby, a home-run derby, and fireworks. Um, I want to thank you, John, for, um, being a sponsor, and we are looking for more sponsors and vendors, so that's all we have, thank you.
Thank you, and just keep ups on, uh.
I don't know.
Nice to see this for you to sponsor.
They're like a strikeout contest, that's neat.
Mister Sheriff.
I don't have anything, Mister Chairman.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Man, good deal. Uh, Mister Lipton.
Uh, Friday is your live first, uh, Williston will have its, uh, Independence Day parade, beginning at five o'clock. Uh, gigs to Horstens Park open at seven, uh, live music, food, so forth, as we've done in past years, and the fireworks will commence shortly after dark. So that's on Fri, the Friday of July fourth weekend.
Sounds good.
That's it.
I don't miss anybody. All right, Commissioner reports, Commissioner Rooks. Okay. Well, mighty here, I mean, I normally have a. Or you want to go last, because you have your resolution?
No, I'll do it.
All right.
This one is different from what you saw last meeting. I wanted to include the three inches change, because I don't want to take something before FWC and say to stop the two-inch, usually two-inch nets altogether. And have that possible, have them interpret it that you can't wish at all.
Uh, what we're talking about is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners from Leaning County Florida, requesting the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to amend the Rule sixty-eight B dash four point zero zero eight one, limiting the net size to a three-inch mesh, requesting expediated, expedited review and adoption of the rule amendment, directing the clerk to forward a copy of this resolution to the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. The President of the Florida Senate, Speaker of the Florida House, Representatives, Governor Rick Scott, and the members of the local county legislative delegation. Uh, this is not to steal Miss Willis under here, but this is in regards to the size of the net that's allowed to be used in what is currently considered a legal net for, uh, gill nets. And after the net man, you're allowed to have one that's so big, so many square feet, but by offending this net size, um, I think you said it would, we'd catch less of, of the juvenile fish, thus having less of a kill, they'd be able to get through the net. And it would be more productive for the industry to have the net that catches the fish that are a market of size. And I commend you for bringing this forth, because this will help, but few fishermen we still have left, I mean, I know a lot of them converted to doing the clams and other things, but we do have some that are still fishing, and everybody should enjoy a good mullet. And wants some. We have a motion to adopt the resolution, and a second by Commissioner Rock Meeks, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Anything else? They're, they're not doing anything, and see your two for the four feet on that. I don't know, I haven't heard nothing either. I haven't heard nothing, so I, I don't know.
I would like to bring something to your attention. We've had several teams that have gone and played baseball, softball, they've done very good, and we have one that's going to stay.
Right, one got a long career.
What I'd like is for us to recognize them, their coaches and their parents at some point.
You're talking about the youth league teams? Yes, ma'am. Rock, you just got elected to be in charge of. Ain't you like the baseball commissioner?
No, I'm not. I just coach, I'm just the coach.
Well, you know people who know people. We have a motion, and I think we got a second from Commissioner Stevens. Can you arrange that, and come to the meeting if you recognize?
I think we might not have, what meeting you want them to come to? Let's not do it. Sometime after the fifth.
Yeah.
And that is, just the girls, candy.
I think it was, uh, something fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Then they, I didn't know that they got one, either way.
Thirteen fifteen is this weekend.
We've, we've got some little kids that. I watched a game in Lake City. And this little guy, he's either eight or nine years old, playing third grade, and I put him up against some of the high school. He can sure throw that ball, get him out in front of space.
It's amazing what they can do, stay the late, if you haven't saw it, if you haven't saw kids play this game, um, or the way kids play ball now, I don't understand how it can be so different, but I don't know if it's they play so much more.
They play more, they start younger, they have better equipment, I mean, every kid's got a hundred fifty-dollar bat in their bat bag, and I'm like, I had one twenty-five-dollar worth of bats.
Well, this is the money that we. And then I was watching the, uh, this little boy play, and I didn't know who his parents were, and then I found out it was a kid that I had coached, and he was a coach.
Let him play.
Well, he's actually better than his father.
Get hold his father, that too. Mister Lipton.
Cedar Key is having fireworks, the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring it, and they are collecting donations now, you can leave them at the Welcome Center, or at City Hall, and they will be on the Fourth of July. And it's going to be offshore, I guess on a barge, you'll be able to see them from Dock Street, it'll be between Cedar Key and St. Ovi.
Thank you.
So that won't be on the Fourth, what day is yours on?
On the Fourth.
On the Fourth, good, hey, busy day, you leave, you can hurt the sand.
Well, now. Yeah, that's who's firing a lot, Bronson has a lot.
No, it's on the Fourth of July celebrating. They go to Crystal River.
Now, we got Williston.
Come to Bronson, on the Fourth.
Put Williston on the first, and come to Bronson on the fourth. So I.
There you go.
I'm just listening to Cedar Key, all the way around.
Now, can you throw candy, Williston?
No. Can you get out water? Can you do any, you can, you can, if you've got people, if you, if you've got people that are walking along the curbs, you can hand candy out, but not throw it from, from vehicles and clothes and such.
I didn't hear that many people.
We're just, we're concerned about, particularly about the little kids, getting out and, and getting out sort of into traffic and all that, it just, it's, we've had a couple of sort of near misses.
It was bad at, at Cheatsland for the watermelon, best, those little ones kept running out in front of vehicles that were coming along. They, they, you know, they'll spot candy after it's been thrown.
Nothing for you, nothing for you. I don't have a whole, yeah, I've got just two, three little things, uh, number one, uh, there's an I seventy-five relief task force meeting for the hill at the Williston crossings on, uh, this Friday.
At nine o'clock.
At nine, parking is limited, so you need to be there early.
Enter on the, on the Fifth Street sign next to the funeral, and there'll be parking up in a, up in a field, and then a shuttle bus will take you into Williston crossings from there. And there should be some, there should be some signs up to direct.
We have our regular. North Florida Regional Planning Council meeting, I guess we'll find out Thursday night if we're really members yet or not, uh, we've agreed to pay their dues, so that's a step in the right direction. And next week, uh, we're going to, uh, some of us are going to go to the Florida Association of Counties, uh, annual conference, uh, where we'll be taking our ethics training, I hope, uh, I will. And, uh, Small County Coalition meeting, and there'll be a lot to do, a lot to see, um, so look forward to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be going with you. And then a reminder, of course, um, Williston's having a version prepared December, uh, Saturday, June twenty-fifth, this is Saturday, so ten to two, at the Church of Jesus Christ, Latter East Saints, on North Main Street in Williston, so everybody check that out.
We know.
Candy now.
Yes. I'm planning on staying the Friday to run, or to maintain my seat on the board directors, and I'm also getting a torchbearer award, you know, to be, so I can do the state association, I don't want to brag about that. Yes, ma'am.
The planning commission meeting, that's the one in Lake City on Friday morning?
It's on Thursday night at six o'clock, North Florida Regional Planning Council.
There's also, there is also a meeting on Friday in Lake City.
Okay.
And that's, that's a different thing.
Okay.
I mean, it's still the Regional Planning Council, but it's, it's a different way.
Cause I got confused, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, uh, do I hear a motion to pay the bills? Sorry, we have a motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Meeks, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, uh, regular board meeting minutes from May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, any additions, subtractions, omissions, or errors? I don't know, there's supposed to be an E on Tom Singleton's name, but I can't say for that to be incorrect, I've just never seen Tom spell T U M E. I mean, I don't think that in any way changes the meaning of what we're here talking about, but I didn't notice that. I guess he's working here, I guess that's it. They weren't home today.
Just stripped down person today, handles on vacation.
Can we stay on task, getting home this time? Looking, so I'm about to ask. I was looking to see what else I had, that's the only thing I had, so.
We don't have to interview on Thursday then?
No. All right, the minutes, all favor of approving the minutes. That's your motion, Danny's motion, Rock's second, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. All right, does anybody have anything else that needs to come before this board today? If not, everyone have a safe and happy, healthy Fourth of July, and see you back here on the.